Good evening. Welcome to the Lower Beaver Neighborhood Association's 2024 Des Moines City Council at-Large Candidate Forum. Yes, I had to practice that just to make sure it came out without stumbling my tongue. And I dare you to try and do it a couple, three, four times on your own fast. Thank you, Larry. Right? My name is Jeremy Gertis. I am the president of the Lower Beaver Neighborhood Association, and I will be the moderator for this evening's discussion. The LBNA is working very hard to build a neighborhood that people want to call home. To that end, we host forums like this, public meetings on the first Thursday of even-numbered months, if that's not confusing. And we always have interesting presentations and get updates on a wide variety of community subjects and things like that. We share volunteer opportunities and we do a whole lot more in the community. If you'd like to join the Neighborhood Association and help us build a neighborhood that people want to call home, membership in the LBNA is just $20 per household per year. Pretty good deal. And you can visit our website, lowerbeaver.org, and click "Join Now." I see that we also have several other neighborhood associations represented tonight, and I just want to give them a shout out. So if you don't live in our association, Merle Hay's here, Chautauqua Park's here, and Prospect Park, Drake, Mondamen, there we go. Beaverdale, right? Awesome. So we're doing pretty good. So make sure to check out your Neighborhood Association and join, because Neighborhood Associations are doing a lot of cool stuff in the, in the community. As we begin tonight, I do want to thank the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association. They've sent some, some tremendous volunteers to help us out tonight, and we're glad that you guys are here. Couldn't do this without you guys. And also our friends here at Deborah Heights Wesleyan Church. They allowed us to use their facility and their equipment so that we can stream tonight's meeting live on YouTube. And so if you wave at the camera in the back, the whole world can see you right now. There you go. Woo, exciting. Also, speaking of the church, the LBNA is partnering with the church to do a massive community Easter egg hunt at nine o'clock AM on Saturday, the 23rd of March. And it will be at Woodlawn Park. Kids ages zero through fifth grade are invited to come and find candy in the eggs. And we have a couple of eggs. Is that fair? We literally, we literally have thousands of eggs, thousands of eggs. So it'll be fun. Here's the advice that I have, pro tip, do not be late. So if you want to bring kids to this, do not be late, because if you come at 9:05, they will have already started and half of the candy will be gone. I promise you, we will be completely done by 9:15. So seriously, it is a crazy, crazy event, but it is a blast to do. So nine o'clock, the 23rd of March, we'd love to have you join us at Woodlawn Park. Tonight's conversation is being held ahead of the special election, which will be on Tuesday, March 19th. It's going to fill the city council seat that was vacated by Mayor Connie Boson. She got elected and apparently can't serve both. Who knew? There are five candidates contending for this seat. In alphabetical order by last name, they are Claudia Addy, Benjamin Clark, Justin Lewis, Mike Simonson, Sister Rose Mary Smith. Each of these candidates received an invitation several weeks ago to participate in tonight's discussion. Tonight, we are joined by Claudia. I want to raise your hand. There she is. Justin, there we go. Mike, and Sister Rose, there she is. There we go. Each of these candidates received an invitation, like I said, and we received no response from the other candidate that was here. Just give you a heads up. The rules for tonight's discussion are simple. Can we do rules? Are we okay with that? Okay, here we go. Number one, no mud wrestling. Or mud slinging. You know, one or the, they're kind of the same, so no mud, no mud tonight. We don't need that stuff, okay? Number two, candidates will be given three minutes to present an opening statement to introduce themselves, tell us about their experience, and highlight their priorities for the city of Des Moines. After the opening statements, the candidates will be given a chance to answer a series of questions. These questions have been submitted by Des Moines residents via an online form. They were curated and organized earlier today by a couple of volunteers. No questions will be taken from the audience this evening, although if you stick around, I haven't asked them this, but maybe if you stick around, they'd be willing to stick around too and answer any questions you have.
Absolutely.
Okay, so there you go. Let's see. In the front row this evening, we have a couple of people here. Raise your hand, ladies. There we go. They are. These are our timers for the evening. They're going to be keeping you guys on track with time, so they have some signs that they'll, that they'll put up to tell you how much time you have left. And when it says "stop," it does say "stop." You didn't make "shut up," did you?
I'm scared.
Seriously? Claudia, we were getting ready, and Claudia's like, "Do you want it to say 'stop' or 'shut up?" I was like, "Claudia, come on."
You have to say it. Say it.
In reality, it was me, but Claudia's the one that made it say "stop," not me. All right, um, let's see. If one candidate mentions another, we're going to give the, the named candidate 30 seconds to respond. Is that's unfair? And the moderator may interrupt if the candidate goes too far off subject, attacks another candidate, and/or runs out of time. Everybody good? All clear? Outstanding. So, the first thing that we will do tonight is our opening statements. And you're going to get three minutes to tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the city council. And we're going to start on this end.
Can you hear me?
Is your mic on? Yep.
My name is Rose Marie Smith, and I'm running for the at-large seat at Des Moines City Council. My platform is homelessness, affordable housing, veterans, and also public schools, and also gun laws. We do not want to have another Perry-Iowa incident in Des Moines, in Iowa. I served on the Des Moines Public Housing Board long time ago. So I, I have served, and then I, I have served in the community with the beloved Mass Choir. I can't see that. I can't see it, girl. I can't see your... Oh, okay. I have served with the beloved Mass Choir, which we had a fundraiser for the Grub Y, and that also been in a musical in relationship to Old Ship. And the community is most important to me, and I'm glad to be here with all these neighborhood associations tonight, because this is where the real citizens, the real people are. And I most certainly, th- th- this is an awesome time, and I'm, I'm happy about this, because your neighborhood associations are the ones that most certainly will get information back to the citizens. And you, you can't beat a neighborhood association. You can't beat that, because that's a, that's an entity that was so powerful, because we, you know, we represent each other, citizens. And when you have, we have 49 neighborhood associations in Des Moines, and I most certainly enjoy this meeting. And please, I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Simonson. Can you hear me okay? People sometimes say I'm soft-spoken. First of all, regarding mud slinging, you have an impressive group of people here. There has been no mud slinging. We're here to convey information, and this has been a very positive race, so I thank everyone. I also thank you for inviting us into your home. This is part of your neighborhood. A little bit about myself, I grew up in Illinois. My father ran the Department of Mental Health, Developmental Disabilities for the state of Illinois. I was interested in architecture and went west and attended Iowa State University. It's nice to see an Iowa Stateer out here proudly. And upon graduation, I surprised my parents when I said, "I am not moving to Chicago," where I have a lot of family. "I am moving to Des Moines, Iowa." And my father said, "Why Des Moines, Iowa?" And I said, "You will see. When I move, you will come." While I was at Iowa State, I got to know some people in Des Moines, and I just fell in love with Des Moines. It's a large enough city that it has the amenities of a larger city, but small enough to still be able to get around in 15 minutes in any direction you're in a cornfield. And my observation as I got to know some people in Des Moines was, work was done on a handshake. I was looking for a place where hopefully one day I could open up my own architectural practice and make a difference. So I moved to Des Moines, and at age 29, I opened my own architectural practice. I saved my money, and I didn't have to borrow a dime. I lived in a 624-square-foot apartment and saved my money. Des Moines has been good to me, and as I've built the business, we are now licensed in 22 different states. As I've built this business, and I have made the commitment, and I've told my office that should I win this seat, I will step aside from the office and devote full-time to this practice. I began getting involved in different activities in the city of Des Moines. I have one minute left. I've served on various boards, Parks Board, Housing Appeals, and then most recently, Planning and Zoning, where I served for 12 years. That's an important component as to why I'm running. I got to know staff, city council, the workings of the city. And again, I've worked in 22 different states, so I see what other cities are doing. Many good things, so I'm bringing some of those ideas. I would like to make a difference. There are four things, as I knock on doors and go to neighborhood association meetings, and I'm sure we're going to talk about these things that come up in every meeting. Number one is homelessness. Number two, affordability of housing. Number three, schools. And the last thing would be DART. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Claudia Addy, and I'm running, uh, I'm reading a little bit of this, because I wanted to stick within the time limit. So I'm sorry. I'm not even going to do a very good job of that, because I don't have my glasses on. But I am running. I'm running because I believe that I am the best person to carry on the good work of the citi- that the citizens recently voted the current council in to do. This abbreviated term holder should not be one that upsets the apple cart, but one that complements the work that is in progress now. In addition, I have formulated a couple of thoughts on waste recycling program and neighborhood beautification. I think I can do these couple projects by just interjecting with no council involvement. As far as homelessness goes, there are as many reasons for homelessness as there probably are encampments. Some of the problems with homelessness would be familial, running from family matters, financial matters, legal matters, and then there's probably mental illness somewhat involved. So there's so many reasons for it. One, there is no one good fit for that. I'm a retired physician. I retired a few years ago, and when my shoulders gave out, and I was retired until I healed, and then I was bored, and so now I have eight part-time jobs. It's ridiculous. So I've been working very hard in the past few weeks, because I'm, I'm down at Iowa Event Center for all of these tournaments, and it's been 15-hour days down there. And so I've gotten myself a little bit sick. So please excuse my voice. But I work at the polls. I've been working at the voting polls since I was 18. My volunteer resume is lengthy, from being a candy striper at the hospitals when I was very young. And if you read something, it's "striper," not "stripper." I checked the spelling. So from being a candy striper to planting the neighborhood corners, to grow, working in the greenhouses for Des Moines, growing the plants. So I'm asking for your vote today, and I hope to carry on the good work of the city council that they've been doing and bring more to it, but not upset what their agenda is currently. Thank you.
All right, good after, no, good evening, actually. Sorry, that's where my head is at. I'm, I'm Justin Lewis. I'm running for Des Moines City Council at Large. I am your neighborhood kid who's raising his children in this neighborhood. I have a six-year-old and a four-year-old, Ezekiel and Eden. My daughter's the oldest, and she goes to Samson. And my son is the youngest, and he goes to a daycare that's right here in this neighborhood. So I'm vested here. You can hear it probably in my voice. We need some different voices on city council. I could go into my resume, but, you know, I, I make good decisions, but I'm a father first. And there's a lot going on in our city when it comes to Des Moines Public Schools, with Des Moines Water Works, with DART. There's a whole list of things. And really, a lot of it's caught up in politics, red versus blue. When we're looking at the state legislature, there's a bunch of chaos going on. When we're looking at our governor, there's a bunch of chaos going on. And we're a direct target. And I'd be a fool to say that I can get in this seat and change the world, but I at least can hold the line for this city. At least we'll be reaching out to her once I take the seat and ask her to hold up on us. That you're running away good talent. That people that look like me are fucking scared. I'm sorry, but it's the reality. I'm a black man in America. Police have slammed my leg in the door multiple times. I've had family put through windows. We need different perspectives. I'm not here for a revolt over, to overturn government. I went to Iowa State. I'm a first-generation college student. I'm here for good. I'm here to make good decisions. I'm 34 years old, and the average age of our city council is 70. Here, if, if, if you're really concerned about my experience, I sit on four boards here in Des Moines. I don't care to share, because it's not about the work of sitting on the board. I sit on Lutheran Church of Hope. We divide up millions of dollars for the missions board. I sit on Interfaith Alliance. I do Iowa Viable Council, and I'm on Planning and Zoning. So I'm reputable. I was opponent by the current mayor who left, who won the next seat, and we're looking to fill this. So this is my second time through. I hope I can earn your vote. We need some change. I will make sure to hold the line, but I also need you to help me hold the line, because I'm human. I don't have all the ideas, and the ideas are sitting right here in this room. I can tell you how I can think through problems, and I will show that here today in this debate. But we need a different voice in this seat, and I'm, I'm that different voice.
Thank you, candidates. We turn to our questions, and I've divided these into one, two, three, four, five, six categories. We'll just kind of work through the categories, and for each question, we will give you one minute to respond, and if we need a little extra time, we can maybe debate that as we go. Sound good? I'm talking. All right. So the, the first category is diversity, and the first question is, considering the current membership of the Des Moines City Council, if elected, what unique perspective will you bring to the council that is not currently represented there? We're going to start with Mr. Simonson and work clockwise around the, around the stage.
Diversity is an important component when we look at who serves the city, which is comprised of a diversity of people. I happen to be a gay person, and so that is one item of diversity that I possess. When I opened my office, people told me, you know, "You're not going to get as much work if you're an out-gay person." And my response was, "I believe that people will recognize me for what I can do and the talents that I bring." And it has not been, had a crippling effect for me, but I certainly worked toward it. The appointment of boards is critically important. I would like to see a much greater diversity on the appointment of boards. Whoever wins the city council seat, those council members are the people who make appointments. So I certainly would intend to see qualified people to sit on boards that add to the diversity that reflects the community in which we live.
I don't think that you need to exhibit diversity on the current city council as much as you need to have people who understand diversity and are willing to accept diversity and work towards that. So, you know, whether I'm diverse or not, and I will not, would not be if I was on the city council, is another matter. But I do understand, and I have lived in communities that are different from myself, and I understand somewhat of the, those communities. And I've also offered, I can offer thoughts and ideas on how to make the community a better place for others.
I'm here. Perfect. So what would I would bring? So I have a nonprofit called Des Moines Selma, and what we do is we actually go into organizations and we help them restructure their systems based off of diversity and equity. What does that look like? It's strictly people at the table with a different lens of life, a Hispanic woman, a Chinese woman, a, a black man. And these are people that are just at the table saying, "This doesn't look right based off of my culture," or "This doesn't look like off of my base, doesn't look right based off of my lived experiences, and maybe we should do some retraining based off of this culture." So that's what I'm going to be bringing into city council. Again, this is city government, or in just layman's terms, it's government. And government is supposed to represent everybody, and how do we represent everybody? Well, it's getting everybody at the table through diversity and equity. We don't know what we don't know. Our schools aren't teaching us how to show up for one another. We have a little bit of history, a little bit of math, and that's about it. So we still have a lot of work to do in this country, but we're making leaps and bounds, and I'm very proud to be an American for sure. But let's continue to grow.
Okay, Claudia. I, you know, one thing about life is God did not create clones. He created originals, and we all are originals. We have something to bring to the table of life. You might be a mother, you might be a father, grandfather, grandmother, great-grandmother, great-grandfather. You have something to bring to the table of humanity. And once we realize that, we can do anything, we can accomplish anything that needs to be accomplished. We can do it. And I see a lot of what we would call, what generation do you guys call? I don't know what generation you guys call, but I, I see a lot of wisdom in the room, okay? When I say wisdom, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the, the gray hair, okay? Wisdom.
I'm just not sure how to respond to the wisdom. Our second question tonight, and we'll start with Claudia tonight for this one. Several major cities across our nation have, in recent years, adopted a policy of refusing to cooperate with federal authorities to enforce immigration law. These so-called sanctuary communities currently include seven counties and one city across Iowa. Under what, if any, circumstances would you support naming Des Moines a sanctuary community?
Well, I've seen, I've seen other communities who have become sanctuary cities, and it's not good. Our immigration policy, I do not believe, we, we have none. It's, it's wide open down on the border, and we have no idea who's coming in. And the sanctuary cities that I have seen in Denver and New York and California are in great jeopardy. And the citizens of those communities are in, are in jeopardy, and I don't want to see that happen in Des Moines. So we need a border policy rather than our community becoming a sanctuary city.
This one's going to be tough, because this is more of a national issue. I, I would need more information, I'm going to be very honest. But I do know I love people. I do know this country has opened up its gates to a whole flood of people that have made America great, right? Build, buildings, or schools, or churches. We're taking that term back from the, right? Right? America is a great country, because we're the melting pot. And so my heart will be set on policies that bring people together, that protect people. It's, it's a beautiful thing to sit under the, the stars and stripes and know that we're protected. And that's why people seek refuge here. So I'd be very difficult to turn people away. I'd bring them up to our customs and, and love on them and, and show them the American
I, uh, sanctuary cities, we all...
It's fine, isn't it? Is it green?
Oh. Claudia, I say, I don't know about this. We all live at a sanctuary city, you know? We all at a sanctuary city. You're at a sanctuary city, you're at a sanctuary city. It's our home. It's who we are. And we cannot eliminate other individuals that wants to come into the United States and be a part of the United States. And we cannot eliminate other individuals that wants to come into the United States and be a part of the United States. So we all are in a sanctuary. Embrace, bring them in. Because AI is going to change our lives. And we need to bring in individuals that help us grow in relationship to be in a sanctuary city.
My home is also a sanctuary. On April 4th, uh, a family from Cuba is going to join me in my household. Uh, they crossed the border about six months ago. I became aware of this through some friends of mine in Miami and I said, I would like to help them. Um, they are here with the necessary paperwork. I would like to see that they have a very good experience in this country. I do not favor at this time designating Des Moines as a sanctuary city. I think if we have that tag on us, we have a bullseye. I would like to continue to support immigrants in any way that I can. Um, and if you'd like to talk about that afterwards, I have some great stories to share. Um, but I do not think that we need to um, designate ourselves as a sanctuary city.
This is kind of an interesting trend, politicians who stop before the time limit. It's weird. I don't know if we can handle this. Yeah, that's true. They did say no politicians. Our next question is still in the diversity category. Currently our city's boards and commissions are not especially diverse. How would you work to help our city's boards and commissions better reflect the diverse population of our community? We start this one with Mr. Lewis.
Uh, short answer by electing me. Seriously, um, I, I have a, an amazing network of friends that I've grown up with from McKee Elementary to Hoyt Middle School to East High School in Iowa State. And some of those folks still live here amongst us. Um, all diverse backgrounds. From Asian to black to lesbian to gay to straight to um, Egyptian to Chinese. Um, they're living here, they're doing work here. Um, and those are the people that I'm going to appoint. Drake grads, the, they're going to be young. They're going to be in their thirties. They're going to be professionals. They're going to be respectable. They're going to be what's beautiful of this, this community. Um, so that's what you will get. Um, and that's what I'll be going after with, with the seat. And I'll stop now.
Okay, you're going to have to repeat the question.
Currently, our city's boards and commissions are not especially diverse. How would you work to help our city's boards and commissions better reflect the diverse population of our community?
Diverge? I want, well, let me get started here. I think that we need to include everyone. Everyone has something to bring to the table and we should not be limiting anyone in relationship to diversity. That, that's a form of uh, discrimination. And uh, we shouldn't be discriminated against anyone. Maybe my hair is red, my nails might be pink, but I'm still a human, part of God's kingdom. And I don't think we need to, you know, to try to separate that. We need to all come to the table and be able to resolve issues that we are currently dealing with. But I'm serious though. Uh, I really, I really believe that uh, God did not create any clones. We're all originals. Thank you.
There is no shortage of very talented people of all walks of life in our community. Um, I'm going to take Justin's line, elect me and we're going to have a lot of diversity in our boards. People aren't serving because they haven't been asked. Um, I know lots of people, I've been on, gosh, a dozen boards in the city of Des Moines. I'm certainly out and about the community. People just haven't been asked. Um, I'm not interested in appointing friends. I'm interested in appointing to the boards qualified people who can make a difference in whichever committee they are on. Thank you.
Well, I'm backing up Rose. And I'm going to say that youth is for learning and old age is for wisdom. So when you see these grays, that's, that's wisdom. Alright? And where we see discrimination, we should call it out. That's all uh, that there is to it. But you cannot force people into situations that they're not comfortable in. And uh, so yeah, I would hope that we have volunteers who want to serve and uh, and work towards a bettering the community and have suggestions for making this a better place to live for their families and all of us. And uh, but where, where we see discrimination, we should root it out. Thank you Claudia.
We move now to crime and policing. In recent years, several high-profile incidents across the nation and here in town have put a spotlight on the way police officers interact with the public and especially persons of color. As a member of the city council, what if anything, would you do to improve the way Des Moines police officers interact with the public? I believe we started with Justin that time, is that right? So we start with Sister Rose.
Most certainly, uh, our uh, police officers are most important. Uh, you know, in relationship to helping citizens. Uh, but when they cross the line and uh, make a difference in, in terms of how they uh, you know, police, then I have a problem with it. And I'm not against, I'm for a police review board. And the reason I'm for that is, uh, it's the concept of iron sharpening iron. If we are able to have a uh, review board and then they can tell the, they can, not tell, but anyway, they can bring information to the table that maybe the police officers might not know. So I do uh, believe that we should have a police review board and that's iron sharpening iron. We're sharpening each other, makes each other, you know, better in terms of relationship, how we serve. Thank you.
One of the things I've learned as I've been out in the community is that city council no longer meets with police, with fire, with the school board, with the school superintendent. I think the first place we need to start is actually meeting leadership with leadership to find out what their needs are. I do support our police. One of the greatest things that they've done is to modify when calls come into nine one one. Are they routed to the police department or are they routed to a special unit that deals with mental health and those types of things? Thousands of calls have been since this was instituted, have gone to the proper people to help make those calls and it ends up not being the police department. I am being endorsed by both police and fire for this election. I believe that is in part because I have taken the time to talk to them, to hear what their needs are. And they want to be heard. They have needs and we should be talking to them. How can they be better at what they do? Thank you.
And uh, I too am being endorsed by policemen. Uh, I love our police force, most of them. I have given them many, uh, some suggestions on how to uh, handle a situation that was being uh, said to uh, be discriminatory, uh, policing and pulling over uh, cars. Uh, I think that uh, when you see a car with an equipment problem, that's could be a camera, a shot. That is not concerning the driver necessarily, but the owner of the car. Take a picture of the license plate, send a citation, get your rear light fixed, your headlight fixed. Send us a notice and this will be dropped. And uh, there's no reason for a stop and sniff or I, I'm not sure what they called it, but the policeman would uh, attempt to smell in the car and see if they could arrest someone. Uh, thank you.
Sorry, we started work this week, so the pollen's kicking me up. I got some lemons and ginger in there. Um, so I, I have Dana Wingard's phone number. Uh, I've met with him personally. He's a great guy. Um, our law enforcement here in Des Moines compared to other cities is doing a really good job since Black Lives Matter. Um, I got friends on the force who work on SWAT and I pray for them to go home every day. Understand what I'm saying? They got children. So um, but we don't know what we don't know. And I would support a citizens review board. That's the makeup of this community and uh, give different perspectives. Um, not give so much teeth where we're removing officers. That should be the duty of um, city council and the police chief and the city manager. But to give data and perspective and background so they can make a decent decision that's rooted in truth and reality and experiences of others. Um, so yeah, but Des Moines is doing great. I'm proud of where we're going. Um, and I gotta stop now.
Claudia is like the timer Nazi. She's all over it. And I think she's taking joy in this too. I, I think, I honestly think she's like really enjoying being able to tell politicians to stop talking. Anybody else wanted, uh, no. Our next subject is housing. Uh, Des Moines is currently facing a significant shortage of quality affordable housing. If elected mayor, or sorry, council member, what would be your strategy for increasing the number of affordable housing units in our city and encouraging improvements in the quality of existing units? We start with Mr. Simonson.
This is far more than a one-minute explanation. Um, unfortunately, again, this item comes up repeatedly toward the top of the list as I knock on doors. I happen to know a lot about affordable housing. As an architect, we've designed thousands of units right here in the city of Des Moines and also in other areas. Again, I'm in 22 different states. There is one category of housing whereby the rent is reduced. It's at 80% of the average median income. Those folks are being taken care of fairly well. There's a tier below that whereby people who are working one, two jobs have no safety net. They are not being met and we're, we have a need in the city, as the city data will tell us, of thousands of units. Um, I have some ideas on how to raise more income in the city, not through taxation, um, that we can target items such as this and make a difference. And hopefully I'll have an opportunity to talk about that. Thank you.
We do not need more units without jobs for the people who are going to live in these places. I, what is the term of a lease for an apartment? Tell me, what's the term? One year, right? Okay, what's the term for a mortgage on a home? Thirty years. That's a commitment to a community for people. And that's what you get through having jobs, not units.
So I'd absolutely be for more, um, more housing. And there's multiple ways we can get there. Yes, that's densifying our corridors and putting more apartments that are affordable. Um, it's also filling in the, the vacant lots that are in Des Moines that already have the structure in place. Um, those are just two quick solutions. We have contractors that have five men crew and they're, they're going at it one house at a time. And there's, there's progress being made. Um, so yeah, that, those are, those are just some of the basics, the basic answers to solve some of the problems.
Affordable housing uh, is something that we need right now. In, in the future, when uh, you know, jobs are stable, you've got stability, then you can look at mortgage uh, payments thirty years. But affordable housing is something that we need to deal with right now. Uh, the homeless people are there on MLK in those camps. And all along the river there, you find uh, the camps there. So affordable housing is something we need to do now. And I, I'm not against future growth, but right now we need to be able to have affordable housing so that uh, citizens uh, could uh, you know, have a place to lay their head. Homelessness is not a uh, a lifestyle. It's something that we need to resolve at our city level. Thank you.
A key component in affordable housing is property taxes. Currently, the city of Des Moines has some of the highest property taxes in the state. What will you do to keep property taxes low or maybe even reduce them? We start with Claudia.
Well, in this term, I have a modest proposal to uh, do some work on the recycling program, which I would hope would save money in that uh, on our uh, our waterworks bill, the garbage and waste bill. And there's one other as- aspect of uh, the recycling that our community does a beautiful job. It's, it's just lovely. We don't have garbage everywhere. We've got programs to pick up the big, uh, the large items, you know, you put a sticker on them. We don't see, uh, we don't see dryers and washers and mattresses in our, in our uh, ditches anymore. But there's one uh, problem and that is with, um, I'm not going to call them junk cars, but with well-intentioned uh, cars that are sitting there to be uh, revamped. And uh, I would like to see the city uh, have the titles turned over to the city and the city would take those to a salvage unit and they could retrieve the three hundred, five hundred dollar.
And that's fine.
Sorry Claudia. Someone else had to stop me.
I think next time we're going to auction off who gets to run the timer. I think it'd be a good money fundraiser, don't you think? Alright. We turn now to uh, oh, sorry, gotta keep going. My bad. Go ahead.
Um, so I wouldn't be for raising um, any taxes, not for the near future. Um, so I worked at the state. They put me through school. Um, uh, it's a master's level program to become a certified public manager. And in that process, you learn how to lean out our bureaus. Um, that's one thing I would want to see at this, the state, not the state level, city level, is that we're creating process guidelines where citizens can go to the website and know all the processes to pay a bill, where to find the grant funding for a program. Um, and then second, just looking at the double processing of things. Um, some of our documents in our organizations like public government take seven signatures for anything to move. And so all that manpower is wasted dollars that we're spending. And those are the processes that I will be going after to figure out how we can cut costs. Cause if we can cut costs, we can find money to put somewhere else. Um, lastly, this is kind of on the same subject, but our public schools don't have libraries, librarians anymore, but Des Moines does. And so there's a opportunity for us to collaborate and partner together. So I'm looking to go lean, but not to raise taxes. And now I will stop now.
You know, uh, the city of Des Moines has the Aurora Manor Retirement Center. I think it's on 10th and Crocker down in that area. And uh, they uh, receive HUD money, you know, to build that. Why can't the city start applying for HUD money to be able to uh, have uh, the, you know, the housing situation uh, that is not going to raise our taxes? Cause we do not want taxes raised. But I think the city should pursue that in relationship to that. They'll, they'll, the city will get, uh, get more money from HUD than I can get from HUD, okay? And then they can build, uh, you know, build those communities. And then they can build, you know, build those communities in relationship to not raising our taxes. Aurora Blue Manor, they're on 10th and Crocker. That's one of the city's facilities. And they utilize that at that particular time. So why not utilize that today?
Forty percent of the land area in the city of Des Moines is not taxed. We're talking about the State House hospitals, many, many properties. Therefore, 60% of us are paying to operate this city. One of my observations, having been on planning and zoning, is that when large developers come into the community and want to build a building, they come with their handout. And almost everybody gets tax abatement. It might be five, 10, 15, 20 years. One of the things I'm gonna ask the city manager to do is to do an analysis. And if we cut that in half or even cut it by 25%, how much tax valuation is that that we will be collecting? So that we can infuse it to start solving some of these more important problems that we have. There are buildings downtown that have been awarded 20 years of tax abatement. And in year 19, they come back and ask for another 10 so they can remodel their building, and they haven't yet paid taxes. That is not fair.
We turn now to infrastructure. In recent months, DART has been in the news several times. Last fall, they announced that the city of Des Moines needs to increase its franchise fee on gas and electric bills from 5% to 7.5% or bus service in the city will be substantially cut. By their own projections, however, even if the city approves the franchise fee increase, they will still reach the legal cap for what they can collect from Des Moines before 2030. Moreover, the city of Grimes recently withdrew from DART because it could buy a car for every person using the service and still save money compared to what they were spending on DART. The fact of the matter is that thousands of our neighbors rely on DART every single day. If elected to the city council, how will you work to ensure an effective and sustainable public transit system? We start with Mr. Lewis.
What, I got one minute? All right, let's be really fast. All right. So if we're just talking about basic history, we have a country that's built off of slavery. And that's how we divide our dollars up in this country. The fast and equitable and equal way to do it is Grimes come to the table and pay their fair share. DART is a regional bus system. It's not our responsibility as the city to pay for the whole bus system. It's the same reason why our schools are falling apart, but we see million-dollar stadiums being built in Waukees. It's the same reason why our school stadiums are combining and being shared with Drake. Thank God for Drake. Thank God for Des Moines Public's figuring out a solution. But we should have money to refurbish our own stadiums and keep that spirit of South Side and East Side alive. So we really just need to have a discussion about how we're dividing up the pie. Because as a business owner, I'm more than willing to pay 50%. I'm more than willing to pay 70 taxes as a business owner because that's what America used to be. That's what baby boomers was able to do, some of the most amazing things in this country, because people were paying taxes and paying their fair share. And I'm sorry.
Most certainly, we need the, we need a transportation system. We can all agree on that. However, we need to come to the table and get those issues before and get them resolved. We can't come every year or come every election talking about the DART system. Ward one, DART system. Now at-large seat, DART system. We need to be able to get that resolved so we can move forward in relationship to our city. DART needs to come to the table. The Des Moines City Council needs to come to the table and resolve it. And I'm sure we're gonna have, you know, things we have to resolve as, you know, as years go on. But at some point, we need to get the resolution started so we can move forward in relationship. We can't kick DART to the curb. Thank you.
Any city our size needs a robust transportation system. Seventy percent of the people that ride DART have no other means of transportation. I have been asked, because there have been two council members who have indicated that they are not in favor of exercising the franchise fee in order to keep DART operating. I would support a franchise fee if that is absolutely necessary. How do we solve this issue? DART is a regional system, as was described, including DMAC, Broadlawns, and other entities. When I announced that I was running, I received a phone call from the mayor of West Des Moines, who chairs the DART board. I received calls from two different members of the Urbandale School District. I know these people, who have said, "We believe in DART. We want to help be a part of the solution." I would like to lead the effort to solve this once and for all and make sure all of the communities are paying their fair share. And I believe we will get there. Thank you.
Well, the units that we're talking about developing, luckily, planning and zoning are doing their part by locating units on bus routes so that these people who don't own cars will have a way to get to a job that they currently don't have. But hopefully, we can develop in this. The 60, be careful what you wish for also, because the hospitals and the churches are the exempt properties in this town. And so they are the ones that are exempt from paying much of the taxes. So if you like your hospitals and you like your churches, then we have to be careful and we gotta take our savings where possible. I have some ideas for savings and/or even earnings. But you also have to be aware that the city is not setting our property taxes. That's Polk County.
This question is recycled from last fall, but I think it's still an interesting question, so we're gonna ask it again. A large portion of city streets are rated in poor condition. Additionally, Move DSM has identified 667 miles of sidewalk gaps in the city. Under the city's current plan, it will take more than 100 years to fill those gaps. If elected, how will you prioritize the improvement and expansion of our transportation infrastructure? Let's see, where do we, I think we started that one with you, Justin. So we go over here to Sister Rose.
You're talking about 100 years? We most certainly have to resolve it because it's something that is current. So we got to come up with some improvements to, you know, to cut the 100 years down. But, you know, I know what you're talking about because I'm driving down the street and boom, 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 boom. And walking down the street, boom, 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 boom. We most certainly have to resolve that as soon as possible. However, 100 years is a lifetime, and we need to get it resolved. Thank you.
As a city, we need to quit kicking the can down the road. We live in the harshest environment for roads. A couple of observations that I've made. One, the city of Des Moines doesn't have a single dedicated grant writer. The city of Cedar Rapids was just awarded a $20 million grant to build a pedestrian bridge over the freeway bifurcated by interstate system. We are not applying for any of this money because we don't have grant writers. Another observation that I will make is the quality of work that we're seeing done with our streets, et cetera. When you drive throughout the city and see the slowness of the construction work and how it's impacting businesses, the city of Des Moines has taken a position that they accept the lowest bid, which is fair, without pre-qualifying contractors. There is one contractor who's been doing work, and I called my insurance carrier. As an architect, Airs No Missions Insurance. How many claims does this one contractor have against their insurance? Nineteen active claims. We need better quality so that when we build our streets, they actually last.
Well, that's, those are my thoughts. Are our inspectors and our crews doing the work in the proper manner? Are we using materials that will last, that are available for our climate? We can't do everything at once. We have old materials, old concrete. And so we need to upgrade the materials that are being researched in this country. And I know that, I know they are in Alaska and other areas. But are our inspectors and our crews up to snuff? I don't think so.
Oh, I'm gonna answer this fast. I'm a contractor. I employ 30 black and brown folks from amongst us. And I think it's very simple. It's, we have 100 years' worth of work. It's getting access as a contractor to be able to bid on it. There's some great bustling businesses that just don't have the embodiment to be able to go through a 52-page bid and understand it. I was lucky enough to be taken under the wing of Iowa State Circa, and they taught me how to do it. Then I taught my business manager. Then I taught my clerk. Then I taught my second clerk. And so now I have a group of women who submit bids throughout America now because we're getting ready to go to Dallas and do a drop-in for their arboretum. But it's access as a contractor to submit the bid. If we're only allowing the big dogs to play, they will only do what the big dogs will do. And that's cut corners, move slow. If we want more quality, get more people to market. And then we can change the game.
We turn now to economy and the budget. There are several areas in our community that are in desperate need of revitalization. How will you support both existing businesses and entrepreneurs, especially from the immigrant community? We start with Mr. Simonson.
I believe that the item that I had just previously described about tax abatement would help to go in a very long way to solving this problem. There, it's not right that there are parts of our community that are a food desert, that do not have access to good grocery stores. You shouldn't have to go to the C store to buy the food to put on your table in the evening. If we slow this or stop some of this handout with monies for tax abatement, there will be more taxes that we will again collect that we can apply. But I would like to see the tax abatement and those types of efforts being in a more concentrated area or areas who really need the help. Thank you.
I would like to see some training programs and housing for the trainees put into place in the Des Moines area. Number one, we could use a lot more plumbers, and we could use more electricians, and we could use more carpenters, fine carpenters. And, but they need a place that they could come and train and live in while they're doing their apprenticeships. One of the things that's happening is the old guys are moving out and retiring, and now there's no place for young people to do an apprenticeship. So it's a vicious cycle. So we need to do that. And has anybody seen the mainframe for artists downtown? It's absolutely amazing. It's a mainframe. It's called Mainframe, and it's the colored square building on KEO. And they have Friday, the first Friday, it's called an open house of every month. Everybody should go because it's very interesting.
I answer this question as a small business who needed help, right? And my community showed up for me. So Iowa State, Evelyn Clay Davis Center gave me some training on being a businessman. So there's resources here, but they're not promoted. But then there's other things, right? Like utilizing the tax dollars, utilizing spaces like Mainframe. We don't have a business incubator here in Des Moines. We have an art incubator, and it's working. That's what's Mainframes is. We have the dollars, like Mike said, and the tax abatement. We could see a nice spark in our economy if a business could get six months' worth of rent paid for them. $300 is a lot of money for a small business selling clothes or moving smoothies. That's a lot of money. That's startup capital, actually. You can buy cups, straws, and then keep going. So those are the little ideas, little bit of seed money, $1,000 could really change a small business.
I spoke with DMAC, their car system. And what the manager told me was that they train their mechanics on cars that have been damaged through floods or any type of damage. Floods or something happened in the factory, and, you know, they did not cross the meta guidelines. And I thought to myself, he told me, after they trained those students on those cars, they crushed the cars. And I thought, well, why, why would you be crushing those cars? You trained those students on them. You gave them the skills that they needed. Why don't you sell those cars instead of crushing them? But they get them from the different GMC and all, you know, those big fowls up there. And I thought to myself, what a, you know, what a waste of cars.
In an urban area, a food desert is defined as an area in which 500 people live more than a mile from the nearest grocery store. According to a 2022 study by the USDA, significant portions of Des Moines are considered food deserts, including the community we're in right now. As a city council member, how will you work to remedy food deserts in our community? I think this one goes to Claudia. Is that right?
Tried to correct the food desert downtown, and Hy-Vee is closing its doors for many of the hours. The only, the one thing that I can see that maybe we could do because they're having a problem with theft, crime, and shoplifting down there. And I do know that Whole Foods is doing a program that you put your stuff into the cart and it's registered immediately. The only thing that I can think of is, you know, you put your card in at the door, and anything you lift off the shelf is charged to your card on your way out. It's technologically questionable. But you can't fix some of these food deserts, especially the one downtown, without policing people.
So I would start with two organizations, Eat Greater Des Moines. You guys might want to jot that down. And Sweet Tooth Farms. They live amongst us. Eat Greater Des Moines is collecting food, hot food from Come and Go Hy-Vee and putting it in places that are deserts. Sweet Tooth Farms is growing carrots, tomatoes, and putting those in storage vats and refrigerators that are on the side where people can come and get bread and milk and so forth. So that's the start. Donate to them. Next, it's making sure these big companies are not just buying land and holding and sitting on it. Aldi's has showed interest to move a store over here, but business, money's power. So that's gonna stop. I live amongst y'all. I live here. So I understand that we either have to go to this Hy-Vee or here, or we have to go to Urbandale, and those dollars just go over there. So that just has to stop. We just need someone to stand up. And also, this campaign's been grassroots, so I'm not bought by any corporation, so I can have a backbone and say no.
We most certainly need to come to the table and resolve that. A food desert could affect everyone, not just the homeless. But we most certainly need to bring that to the table and resolve that issue so we don't have to keep dealing with the same issues over and over and over again. I, uh, uh, some libraries right now, public libraries, Des Moines Public Libraries, they do have, uh, community refrigerators. And, and, uh, different organizations do contribute, uh, you know, food to the libraries. But that is something that we most certainly need to solve right now, instead of just sitting and talking about food deserts and how they're affecting. That, that's most certainly needs to be resolved as soon as possible. Thank you.
We talk about people coming to the table. Um, I'm going to give you a quick story. Um, I have designed several of the Walgreens buildings. And the Drake neighborhood, Drake University, was losing students because people who filled out, um, opinion polls on why they didn't choose Drake was there was no place to shop. Bob Ray, our former governor, was the interim president of Drake University, reached out to the CEO of Walgreens, who happened to be a Drake grad, pharmacy grad, as did his wife, and said, "Would you build a store in Drake to help our school?" And he did, because they were asked. I know a lot of these folks. Um, I talk to the president over at Fairway fairly regularly because we do their stores. I would love to be able to go to, to, um, Fairway with a package from the city. This is what we're willing to do. Will you buy a store? Retail breeds retail. We do a lot of retail. As soon as you see one quality store, there will be others to be built in that particular area. I would like to lead in that initiative. And I think when we get home tonight, we're all gonna go to sleep with this bell ringing in our ears.
Oh, dude, you started that one. Yeah, there we go. I gotta keep track of what I'm doing. That's, it's late, it's late. It's true, yeah. Here we go. Earlier today, the Des Moines Register reported that recent and proposed state legislation has made it difficult for Des Moines and many other cities to collect enough property taxes to meet their budget needs. Municipal leaders from across the state were interviewed, and they warned that budget cuts will become necessary if something is not changed at the state level. If elected, what would be your budget priorities? And in what areas would you make the first cuts? Mr. Lewis.
Oh, gosh, this sounds like going down your grocery list on what do you want? Do I want milk today? Do I want eggs this week? Um, phew, I come from poverty, guys, so these, this isn't, you know, picking what you, a necessity isn't anything new to me. Like, I shouldn't be thinking about how I can ration our city's resources. I'm going straight up to the Capitol, and I'm going to have a conversation with Kim. So my mentor is connected to this, this, this woman, and, um, this is my second attempt to get a meeting. So after this election is won, because I'm going to win this race, this is my second time through, I'm going straight to her office. But I'm going with a white flag and as a friend, I'm not going to stir no trouble, but we're going to go solve problems. You're hurting my city. Do better.
Luckily, you know, if that's happening at the, uh, state level, uh, you need to, uh, force your opinion by voting those individuals out of those positions. Uh, that, that's, uh, you can have conversation with them, but they evidently, it's already decided what they want to do. So, uh, you as citizens of, uh, City of Des Moines, Polk County, Iowa, you need to start voting them out of office. Uh, the individuals in those offices need to be, uh, representing, uh, what you need. And if, if they're, they're not doing that, you, you need to take to the polls and vote them out. Thank you.
To our mayor's credit, our new mayor's credit, Connie Boson, she bought, put on her most attractive jacket and went and met with Kim Reynolds. And I applaud her for doing that. And one of the things that she told me was that Kim Reynolds was surprised when she heard that, again, forty percent of our landmass does not pay taxes. So when, when the State House puts a cap at three percent of any growth in taxation, multiply that by point six, and that's all that we're going to get. Rather than talking about where can we cut, I'm interested in finding extra dollars. We've talked about my concept of tax abatement. That's a long-term solution. Grant writing, there are resources out there. If we're not pursuing it, we're not going to get any. Thank you.
Well, she lives in, uh, one of the big mansions that doesn't pay taxes. Well, lordy, lordy, who would know? Uh, so, you know, I don't know the size of the governor's mansion that probably doesn't pay property taxes. But we need jobs and commercial property, training people, and, and, and not discounted housing units. You know, no one is going to raise a child in an apartment for any period of time. So I want to see this grow and become a community with long-lasting residents that care, that will shovel their own sidewalks, who don't invent, don't invent pro- uh, solutions to problems that just don't exist. Uh, a lot of times, that's what we do. Oh, I've got a solution for a problem that doesn't exist. Great.
Justin, it's your turn. Did you start that one? Oh, man, I really am slipping.
Now it's your turn.
It's my turn.
Thirty seconds?
Man, this is the last question for the evening. And, all right, it also is recycled from the last time that we did this, but it was a great question. It actually comes from children. And I thought it was a very insightful question, especially considering, uh, our history here in Ward One with a councilperson that failed to respond for a while. So here's the question. And again, this comes from kids. How do we know that we have the right person in the seat who won't abandon us? We start with Sister Rose.
And children are asking that question. How do we know we have the right person that will not abandon us? That is powerful. Uh, we, we most certainly, uh, you know, at that table, we got to make sure that things are okay for the children. Uh, whether we at the, uh, city level, the county level, or the state level, we got to make sure that they are going to be cared for. If we don't take care of the children, you know, that's the next generation, uh, that's, that's after, after us. And we, we most certainly got to take care of them. And I am so, uh, overjoyed to hear children asking those kinds of questions. That is powerful to me, because kids are, you know, they're interacting and they're, uh, you know, they're, they're interacting, and they're, they're concerned about life, and that is so powerful for, to me, the children. Thank you.
Back in December, when I decided that I definitely wanted to run for this office, a good friend offered to pay for a psychiatric evaluation for me. And I, my response was, "I am of clear mind. I've built a good business. I'm very fortunate to be able to step aside from my day-to-day activities. I've got good people who are also owners in my business to continue that effort so that I can devote full-time to this position." I have two large files on my desk. One is about the current campaign, what I need to be doing in order to win. The second file is a list, sheets of paper, in order of importance, of what I want to do when I get in office. The first thing I'm going to do is meet with the four Ward councilpeople to find out what is important to them in their ward, and how can I help do that? This will be a full-time job for me, and I would appreciate your support. Thank you.
It's, it's the shortest question of the whole bunch. Do you want me to repeat it?
This is about the children. And what do children want? They want a stable family. They want a stable home life. They want a safe neighborhood. So I'm, I'm not, you know, this is why I, I'm encouraging jobs and not units, homes, not apartments, mortgages, not leases. Uh, uh, and the homeless have the problems. That some of them are people running away from their families. Others are people running away from financial problems. Others are people probably running away from legal problems. There are as many problems with the homeless as there are encampments. So whatever we can do to, uh, discourage those kinds of problems, we should do. I don't know if, you know, someone's running away from a legal problem, what can we do? A family problem, what can we do? A financial problem, what can we do? There's also mental illness, and I, you know, I'm not going to, uh, pretend to be able to handle that.
All right, awesome. Uh...
Do you need their question repeated?
No, I know what this one is. What I would say to the children is that I'm a father of a six and a four-year-old. My children are doing, my children are doing really well in school. My daughter recently, uh, was invited to be part of book club, and book club is where the most elite readers of the school go. Um, that's, that's only possible because I'm a present and active father. Um, I'm involved in all aspects of their lives, from, from learning to, I coach all their sports. Um, me and their mother are no longer together, but we communicate every day as a team, how, how do we show up for our children emotionally? So what would I do to make sure that the children aren't abandoned is continue to be present? That's why I'm running for Des Moines City Council. Um, and on March nineteenth, you guys get to make that decision. You can put a father in that seat who nurtures, loves, cares, who owns a business, who lives from this community, who sits on four boards and does the work every day. Um, and I, I, I ask that you guys would vote for me then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you also for coming out this evening. Um, I know that you all have very important things to do. Uh, it is eight minutes until the State of the Union starts, so I'm sure you're all gonna rush home to take care of that, right? I can't do that, sorry. But, uh, anyway, I don't have the tuner for it, but, okay. Uh, the, uh, I, I've been asked to tell you that we do have some absentee ballots present, so if you would like to grab one of those, they are...
It's too late.
It's too late? Never mind. Scratch that. Okay, there we go. That's okay. We will figure that out. But, uh, the election is Tuesday, March nineteenth, and we would strongly encourage you to go and make your voice known, uh, as we lead, uh, the state here in Des Moines, and, uh, hopefully the nation as well. So thank you so much for coming tonight. Have a great evening. Have a great evening.
[applause][1002.16]